The earmarking of ESAs accelerates action on environmental commitments both nationally and globally. ESAs are characterized as having critical ecological features which cannot be easily replaced. Impacts to these areas can negatively affect rare and threatened species, ecosystems services, livelihoods, and the quality of life. The protection offered to these areas will contribute to the further strengthening of the natural resilience of the country and provide for the sustainable use of Jamaica's natural resources in support of national economic objectives.
These fifteen ecologically sensitive areas, like Jewels in Jamaica's Crown, are not just geographical wonders. They are guardians of biodiversity, contributing to all resilience. The Jamaican government, led by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, is committed to taking care of the environment. They understand how important it is to balance progress and preserve nature. To achieve this, they have created a detailed plan for environmental protection and sustainable development. The policies forged by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation are a testament to Jamaica's commitment to harmonizing economic advancement with ecological preservation. Within this blueprint, three pivotal policies stand as pillars of change. The watershed policy.
The watershed policy from Jamaica, which is a green paper, is essentially designed to develop policy strategies towards the safeguard of the terrestrial area and the associated waterways. It outlines the government's direction for protecting these areas. It speaks about the collaboration between the various responsible agencies, because the work extends beyond the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation and the National Environment and Planning Agency. We have other major stakeholders such as Water Resources Authority, the Forestry Department, who are all doing work. So basically, it's acting as a measure to coordinate all of the respective activities for these various entities so that we are actually achieving the goals outlined in the policy, which is to safeguard our watershells for healthy, healthy livelihoods.
The updated climate change policy framework.
So the climate change policy framework, which was developed by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, led by the Climate Change Branch, outlines the strategies that Jamaica will be implemented towards meeting the international commitments that have been outlined to combat the impacts of climate change. It outlines national strategies across various sectors, including environmental sectors, transport sectors, looking at air emission issues that would need to be tackled in the short to medium term in order for us to meet the international commitments as well as meet our national policies, including the Vision 2030 that has been outlined and committed to by the government of Jamaica.
And the groundbreaking emissions policy framework.
The emissions policy framework is a national policy that was developed to ensure that we have a more coordinated and structured approach to reducing emissions from harmful substances in Jamaica and to address air pollution from sources that are directly caused by us humans.
In the heart of this ecological symphony, Jamaica is orchestrating a bold movement. A countdown, not just to a date, but to a future, where the harmony between humanity and nature resounds louder than ever before, aiming for a remarkable milestone.
In the financial year 2023-24, government commenced, or started, commenced the preparation of a new protected areas policy for Jamaica, which will replace the 1997 policy. Thereafter, the government will pursue the promulgation of long overdue omnibus protected areas legislation that will govern over 350 declared protected areas in the country, including fish sanctuaries, national and marine parks, and cultural and heritage sites. Mister President, in strengthening legislative framework governing protected areas, the government promulgated new protected areas regulations under the Natural Resources Conservation Authority Act in 2023-2024. Mister President, I am proud to hold these gazetteed regulations up this morning as they have just come from the printed office, Mister President.
As we witness the symbolic tree taking root, it symbolizes the government's commitment to nurturing prosperity across generations. A flourishing ecosystem becomes the cornerstone of a prosperous nation. The story doesn't end here. It's an ongoing journey of cultivation and care. Jamaica is fostering a sustainable legacy where every ecologically sensitive area and policy is a seed, contributing to a sustainable future. Whenever someone thinks of a country that has captivating beauty, they think of Jamaica. Jamaica is a tapestry of ecological treasures, treasures that the government under the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, MEGJC, saw fit to name ecologically sensitive areas, or ESAs. These areas woven into the fabric of the island play a crucial role in preserving its natural heritage. Welcome to Crown Jewels, the ecologically sensitive areas of Jamaica. Ecologically sensitive areas are regions characterized by their unique ecosystems and biodiversity. They serve as vital habitats, ensuring the survival of numerous plants and animal species. But what do the ecologically sensitive areas really contribute to Jamaica?
So these areas, because of the ecological significance, it's flagged for its high biodiversity. And the biodiversity, it really contributes to your everyday life in terms of building resilience, in terms of coastal resilience. It offers habitats for some of the species that we like to enjoy. So if you think about even eating fish, the nursery areas within some of these mangrove habitats that are found within the ESA contribute to your livelihood. They also offer ecosystem services, resilience against extreme weather events, resilience against coastal erosion, as well as acting as barrier against high-waived energy.
And how were they chosen?
Well, the initial list that was endorsed and approved by the government of Jamaica came about as a recommendation from the National Environment and Planning Agency in consultation, actually, with the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, the Urban Development Corporation, and the Forestry Department, because we would have recognized that in our planning and development processes, these areas would have been the subject of development consideration. And looking at the environmental sensitivities in this area, we proposition, we proposition to the government that maybe we should be looking to give policy directives implementing.
And good afternoon, presenters, panelists, and our virtual audience, and welcome to this virtual town hall in what is one of the most critical and far-reaching policies that will impact Jamaica's present and future sustainability, namely, the overarching policy for Jamaica's protected areas system. Now, this panel discussion is being hosted by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation with the formulation and implementation of policies relating to the environment among its other portfolio areas. I am Debbie Bisoun, your moderator for this town hall, and joining me on stage is an esteemed line-up of presenters. It is my pleasure to acknowledge Senator the Honorable Matthew Samuda, Minister Without Portfolio in the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, who has responsibility for the environment, water, and climate change portfolios in addition to the blue and green economies. We also have with us Mrs. Arlene Williams, Permanent Secretary in the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. Joining us as well this afternoon is Mrs. Lorna Bailey, Director of Public Education, Public Relations and Communication at the Jamaica National Heritage Trust. We also have with us Mister Philip Cross, Principal Director, Legal and Forest Enforcement Services Division. Also joining us, Miss Andrea, beg your pardon, Miss DeAndrea Roberts, Research and Officer for the Capture Fisheries Division at the National Fisheries Authority. We also have with us Miss Hugh Garcia-Green, Coordinator, Protected Areas Branch of the National Environment and Planning Agency, NEPA. Joining the panel is Doctor Tonyan Miller, Director, Natural Resources, Environment Risk Management Branch in the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. And later on in the discussion segment of the program, we will be joined by a number of panelists, including Miss Gillian Gockry, Chief Technical Director, Development Planning, Environment Policy and Management Division in the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, MEGJC. Also, we'll have Miss Andrea Donaldson, Senior Manager, Conservation and Protection Subdivision for the National Environment and Planning Agency, NEPA. And rounding out the panel will be Mister Stephen Smichael, Principal Director, Capture Fisheries Division at the National Fisheries Authority. Now, ladies and gentlemen, the presenters and panelists are drawn from the ministry and the agencies responsible for the management of protected areas. But before we begin the presentation, the big question is, what exactly is protected area? Well, that term is used to describe a clearly defined geographical area, whether on land or sea, or water that is, that is managed for the long-term conservation and sustainable use of its resources, whether it is biodiversity, its ecological system, or specific natural, cultural, or aesthetic resources. There are many benefits, not only include safeguarding biodiversity and providing ecosystem services, but they also conserve our water resources and mitigate or lessen the impacts of natural hazards. And with Hurricane Barrel, a very recent memory, this service is particularly important. They also help to regulate our climate and provide employment opportunities for people living in and around them, thereby alleviating poverty. So they are critical indeed. A system of protected areas is necessary to ensure that Jamaica's diverse ecological areas, culture, and heritage are under effective protection and management. So the experts from the ministry and the various agencies are here to shed light on what is outlined in the draft overarching policy for Jamaica's protected areas system with a view of finalizing the green paper for submission to Cabinet for its consideration. But remember, your input is absolutely important, and so we invite you to place your comments or questions on the ministry's YouTube and Facebook pages at MEGJC underscore JM or on the JIS website, not the website, the YouTube and Facebook pages at JIS. Persons may also read the overarching protected areas policy green paper on the ministry's website at www.megjc underscore gov dot JM. Written comments may be submitted via email at ermb@megjc.gov.jm with the subject line, overarching protected areas policy for Jamaica, beg your pardon. Now, written comments in hard copy may be sent to the Environment and Risk Management Branch, Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, at 16A Halfway Tree Road, Kingston 5, no later than July 30, 2024. So we have much to go through this afternoon, so without further ado, I invite at this time Permanent Secretary in the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, Mrs. Arlene Williams, to deliver her opening remarks.
Thank you so much, Madame Bisoun. A very, very warm welcome to all of you who are gathered here today, here in studio, and we'd like to extend a warm welcome to the staff from the PBCJ, as well as all the others who are here, and of course, it would not be a town hall without you, our virtual participants. And so, Senator the Honorable Matthew Samuda, Minister Without Portfolio in the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, Miss Gillian Gockry, Chief Technical Director, Development Planning, Environment Policy and Management Division, the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. And I also would want to acknowledge our various presenters. We have Mrs. Lorna Bailey, who is Director, Public Education, Public Relations and Communication from the Protected National Heritage. Also, from the Forestry Department, Mister Philip Cross, Principal Director, Legal and Forest Enforcement Services Division. We have Miss DeAndrea Roberts from the National Fisheries Authority. We have Miss Garcia-Green, Coordinator, Protected Areas Branch. Doctor Tonyan Miller, who is Director, Natural Resources, Environment, and Risk Management Branch. And this is also from the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. And then we have those persons who will be actively involved in our discussion. Mrs. Lorna Bailey. I think I've said that before. Mister Stephen Smichael, Principal Director. Miss Andrea Donaldson. I want to extend also a very warm welcome to our staff from the PR Branch, who have done such an excellent job. And also, everyone here, Minister's Senior Advisor, Mister Cleon Williams. All of you, town hall meeting. And so, please accept warmest welcome from the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. What we are doing today, Minister Samuda will tell you, is indeed a big deal. The draft policy, approved by Cabinet and tabled in Parliament as a green paper in March 2024, aims to manage protected areas effectively and sustainably, equitably as well, ensuring the protection and conservation of biodiversity and cultural heritage while also delivering social and economic benefits. To achieve this, the government will develop enabling policies and legislation to strengthen governance arrangements. The overarching policy for Jamaica's protected areas will inform the development of omnibus protected areas legislation to address interalia governance and institutional arrangements for Jamaica's protected area system. In June 2024, the Environment and Risk Management Branch of the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation undertook several consultation sessions on the draft policy involving the public and private sectors, non-governmental organizations, and academia. These were quite robust and provided meaningful comments that we have used to bolster our policy. Our aim is that at the end of this day, when this policy is approved as a white paper, it would have benefited significantly from a right cross-section of persons and will provide a very robust document. Today's session provides an opportunity for the general public to present their views on issues affecting our protected areas, including sustainable financing mechanisms and strategies to preserve Jamaica's natural and cultural heritage. The government is committed to building and maintaining a representative, interconnected, and resilient protected area system that supports ecological processes, promotes human well-being, and conserves our natural and cultural heritage. Protected areas are crucial as they provide food and water, regulate climate change, and sustain livelihoods. Once finalized, the overarching policy for Jamaica's protected area system will complement key national policies, including the 2024 Watershed Policy for Jamaica, the 2023 Climate Change Policy Framework, and the 2017 Forest Policy. The ministry is currently working with the Forestry Department on a new forest act and with the National Environment and Planning Agency on the amendment to the National, the Natural Resources Conservation Authority Act and the Wildlife Protection Act to allow for an increase in fines and custodial sentences. This policy and legislative developments will further strengthen the island's protected areas network. We must take bold and decisive action and forge partnerships among all stakeholders to effectively manage our protected areas. I don't think that this is in question. This is something that we must do. And together, we can conserve biodiversity, protect our cultural heritage, promote community well-being, and pave the way for a sustainable future for all. Once again, I extend my warmest welcome to each of you and look forward to a constructive and fruitful exchange of ideas and perspectives to assist the ministry in revising the draft policy for submission to Cabinet for its consideration and approval. And we are trusting God that this will be done in very, very short order. Once again, I thank you all. Session is officially declared open, and we do want to thank you so much and look forward to your very, very robust and lively participation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, PS Arlene Williams, and congratulations to you and the team for creating this space for this very timely discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, now we ask Minister Without Portfolio, Senator the Honorable Matthew Samuda, to deliver his keynote address to our online audience. Please make him welcome.
Good afternoon, my fellow Jamaicans. Allow me to acknowledge Permanent Secretary, Mrs. Arlene Williams, our esteemed panelists, our Master of Ceremonies, of course, senior members of staff who are here with us this afternoon. It is with great pleasure that I welcome you to the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation Town Hall Meeting on the overarching policy for Jamaica's protected areas system, indeed our green paper. I commend the ministry's Environment and Risk Management Branch for their work on the draft policy, which included hosting several stakeholder consultation sessions during which several key issues related to the management of protected areas were discussed. These issues included provision of adequate sustainable financing, strengthening of monitoring and enforcement regimes of the regulatory authorities, identification and employment of strategies to reduce pollution, particularly from land-based sources, as well as to mitigate and adapt to the impacts of climate change. As we speak, teams from the National Environment and Planning Agency and Forestry Department are on the ground conducting assessments of the impact of Hurricane Barrel on the island's natural resource base. Increasing public education and awareness about the goods and services provided by healthy and protected areas is also a focus. Encouraging public participation, particularly from the youth and the elderly in decision-making in all aspects of protected areas management. The proactive engagement of stakeholders, including the general public, in the decision-making process is crucial for the successful formulation and implementation of national policies, programs, and management of the island's protected areas network. This approach, we believe, fosters greater ownership, collective responsibility in achieving common goals and targets. As part of this process, the government utilizes stakeholder consultations as a critical tool to gather information and data through feedback about concerns and recommendations regarding key national development imperatives, including management of our protected areas. An integrated protected area system is essential for preserving biodiversity, ecosystems, and our cultural heritage, ensuring the conservation of vital resources for sustainable use, and addressing challenges like uncoordinated management actions. This is particularly important as it is estimated that over a million species worldwide are facing the threat of extinction. The draft policy emphasizes enhanced partnership and collaboration between and among entities responsible for the regulation and management of these areas, as well as other key stakeholders, including the general public. This coordinated approach will foster more effective management and protection of Jamaica's natural and cultural assets. It is noteworthy for the public that there are more than 350 declared protected areas in Jamaica. These encompass diverse ecosystems, including a national park like the Blue and John Crow Mountains National Park, forest reserves, for example, the Cockpit Country Forest Reserve game, reserves such as the Glistening Waters Game Reserve, marine parks, for example, the one in Montego Bay, and of course, fish sanctuaries such as what is located at Rockobeso. Indeed, Jamaica has significantly increased its protected areas network over the last five years. In recent times, the government declared the Cockpit Country Protected Area, the Pedro Keys and surrounding waters, and the Black River Protected Area. Additionally, in the 2023 to 2024 fiscal year, the government enacted protected areas regulations under the NRCA Act. This year, our ministry in collaboration with NEPA and the Forestry Department will commence work on the declaration of four new protected areas under the NRCA Act, namely Kanu Valley, Montpelier, Industry Cove, and indeed Bengal. This is in addition to the over twenty parcels of Crown lands to be declared as forest reserves and forest management areas under the Forest Act. These declarations will help Jamaica contribute to the global target of protecting thirty percent of its land and thirty percent of its exclusive economic zone by 2030. This is commonly referred to as the thirty by thirty target. We are far advanced in terms of our terrestrial protected areas, with approximately twenty-five percent of our land declared as protected under existing legislation. Indeed, we are on track to achieve the targeted thirty percent protection in 2025, a full five years ahead of the stipulated date of 2030. We realize, however, that we have some catching up to do in relation to our marine protected areas, which stands at approximately fifteen point four percent. But work will continue at pace to meet the stipulated thirty percent target by 2030. It goes without saying that with the exponential increase in our protected areas, the strategies outlined in the draft policy includes, interalia, resource mobilization for protected areas management are indeed critical. With the realization that adequate and sustainable financing is critical for protected areas management, my ministry, and indeed Prime Minister's ministry and its agencies, NEPA, the Forestry Department, are working diligently to secure the necessary financial and technical resources to support our protected areas network. Today's consultative session is therefore an opportunity for the general public to discuss not only resource mobilization, but several other issues related to protected areas management in Jamaica and to further refine the draft policy. We recognize the importance of engaging and educating Jamaicans about the importance of protected areas. By strengthening communication, education, and public awareness, we can foster a culture of conservation and secure the involvement of local communities and other key stakeholders. Your insights, experiences, and recommendations are invaluable as we work to finalize thereafter and implement the policy. Through collaboration and active participation, we can develop a policy that truly addresses the issues and needs of all stakeholders. We encourage proactive engagement, collaboration, and cooperation among government, community-based, government, community-based, and non-government organizations, academia, and of course, the private sector to effectively and equitably manage our protected areas. to effectively and equitably manage our protected areas. The preservation of our natural and cultural heritage is not just a duty, but a legacy we must protect and leave for future generations. Together, we can build a protected areas system that is a testament to our commitment to conservation and sustainable development. Thank you all for being here today, albeit digitally, and I look forward to the insightful discussions and collaborations for the management of our, of your protected areas. Thank you.
And we say thanks to the Senator for his keynote address and thanks as well to our P S for delivering the opening remarks. We thank them both for being here with us this afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, the first of our presentations this afternoon comes from Mrs. Lorna Bailey, the Director of Public Education, Public Relations and Communication at the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, who will tell us about our protected national heritage. Please make her welcome.
Thank you so very much, Moderator Bisoun, my Honorable Senator Honorable Mathis Samuda and Mrs. Arlene Williams, Permanent Secretary within the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, my fellow panelists and presenters, viewers online, good afternoon. The Jamaica National Heritage Trust, or J N H D, or the Trust, as we normally would call it, is a statutory body in the Ministry of Culture, Gender, Entertainment and Sport. Our mandate is to promote the preservation of national monuments and anything designated as protected national heritage for the benefit of the island. Also, we conduct such research as it thinks necessary or desirable for the purposes of the performance of its functions, recommend or undertake development deemed necessary for the preservation of national monuments or heritage sites, record any precious objects or works of art to be preserved and to identify and record any species of botanical or animal life to be protected. The function of the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, we legally protect heritage sites and buildings. We conserve archaeological objects. We provide technical advice to owners of heritage sites. We also, we also guide the development, restoration of heritage sites and buildings through Heritage Development Review Committee. We also conduct archaeological and historical research, provide an archaeological and heritage impact assessment. In terms of the legal framework of the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, we have what we call national monument. And what do we mean by national monument? It is any building, structure, object or other work of man or nature or any part of remains thereof, whether above or below the surface of the land or the floor of the sea within the territorial waters of the island or within an area declared in an order, in an order made under subsection two, to be within the maritime resource jurisdiction of the island. Protected national heritage, what does that mean? It means any place name, any species of animal or plant life or any place or object that is not declared by the trust to be a national monument designated by the trust to be a protected heritage. There is what we call preservation notice, right? And the preservation notice, it has a duration of six months. Only, it only applies to imperil sites intended to protect site while site is fully researched and investigated. The criteria for declaration or designation is found in section twelve, subsection one of the J N H D Act of nineteen eighty five, and it states, "Any structure, the preservation of which is, in the opinion of the trust, a matter of public interest by reason of historic, architectural, traditional, aesthetic, artistic, scientific or archaeological interest attaching thereto." Protected sites under the J N H D Act. As at June two thousand and twenty four, there are three hundred and nineteen sites that have been protected under the J N H D Act, of which two hundred and ninety-two, two hundred and ninety-two are national monuments and twenty-seven are protected national heritage sites. Of this number, approximately sixteen are natural sites or have natural features. These sites, they require money, funding to maintain. And of the over three hundred protected sites under the J N H D Act, the J N H D owns or leases thirty of those sites. For the financial year twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, the J N H D spent approximately seventy-two million dollars on the general maintenance of such sites. Currently, the J N H D does not have a source of funding to assist properties that are privately owned or properties owned by other government entities. The J N H D cannot do protect these sites alone. We depend on collaboration from partners and stakeholders. So therefore, with the various stakeholders, including government agencies, local communities, nonprofit organizations and international partners to achieve its objectives. By working together, these entities leverage resources, expertise and support to safeguard Jamaica's cultural and natural heritage. I thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lorna Bailey, for your presentation. Up next, we have Mr. Philip Cross, Principal Director, Legal and Forest Enforcement Services Division at the Forestry Department, who will tell us about Jamaica's protected forests.
Good afternoon and thank you, Madam Moderator. All protocols observed. The Forestry Department is the executive agency charged with managing and conserving Jamaica's forest resources. So you may know us particularly with respect to Forest Trek and the National Tree Planting Initiatives, but we have a more formal legal mandate, which I'm going to briefly touch on in the next three or so minutes. Apologies, I'm having some technical. Right, so the, this slide seems to have been distorted a bit, but essentially what you see there is that forty-seven percent of Jamaica is covered by forest and of that forty-seven percent, the Forestry Department manages twenty-three. Now, the forty-seven percent forest cover, based on the last land use, land use, land change assessment report, was approximately five hundred and twenty-seven thousand hectares and the twenty-three percent managed by Forestry Department is a hundred and twenty-two hectares. And within that, we have approximately two hundred and forty-eight forest areas. Apologies, these slides are... Sorry, there seem to be some issues with the slides, but I will address that. Okay, so this map gives you a better idea of what I'm referring to. So it has different categories of forests described, displayed in the different color schemes. The dark areas, the dark green areas, those are what we refer to as closed broadleaf forest. Those are the most pristine forests with limited, if not no anthropogenic impacts. Whereas, so to the east, what you'll see there is actually the Blue and John Crow Mountains National Park slash Forest Reserve. And to the northeast, to the northwest, is the Cockpit Country Protected Area, which you would have heard about briefly a moment ago. But also, in the lighter green areas, you have what are referred to as disturbed broadleaf forest. These are also very high-quality forests, but there are certain levels of anthropogenic impacts and as such, they're not as ecologically strong as the closed broadleaf areas. And also listed, you'll see different categories of timber plantations, swamp forest, mangrove forest and so on. So I mentioned closed broadleaf forest and we're here to discuss the National Protected Area System Green Paper. So the, the two closed broadleaf forest areas that I mentioned are key examples of what we're here to, to look at. So the Blue, the Blue Mountain, Blue and John Crow Mountain Forest Reserve is, it covers forty-five thousand hectares of closed broadleaf forest, but it also encompasses the national park, which is managed by the Natural Resources Conservation Authority or NEPA in conjunction with other entities. In addition, the area encompasses several national heritage sites and as such, it is an area, it's a protected area that is of interest to multiple agencies. Also, in twenty fifteen, the Blue and John Crow Mountains was designated as UNESCO World Heritage Site, both for its cultural and for its natural value. And so when we're here discussing the protected areas policy, what we're trying to do is to ensure that all of the different objectives to, for declaring an area protected are captured in the way that they're managed by the different entities. Similarly, we have the Cockpit Country, which is the largest stand of closed broadleaf forest in Jamaica, spanning seventy-eight thousand hectares. It was gazetted, as mentioned by the Honorable Minister, in March of twenty twenty-two and it encompasses twenty-five forest reserves and forest management areas. And then what we call forest estates, which are essentially areas that are managed but haven't yet been designated under the legislation. So in addition to the forest reserves and forest management areas, the Forestry Department is consistently trying to increase the level of protection granted to areas that are managed by it. So as mentioned previously by the Honorable Minister, there are twenty approved areas that have been verified, that have been submitted to the ministry for designation. And then there are five more areas that have been verified that are awaiting approval to then move on to be designated. This encompasses one thousand four hundred and forty hectares of forest, but this wouldn't be an increase in the, in the area that is managed by the Forestry Department. Rather, this is, this would encompass areas that are already managed, but would improve their, the level of protection by giving them legal protection. Now, in terms of what we do at the Forestry Department, we are governed by various pieces of legislation and policy. So what you'll see there is the Forest Act, which is our, which is our governing legislation, the nineteen ninety-six Forest Act, and the forest regulations, which detail some of the more intricate details of what is required by the Forest Act. Additionally, we have the N F M C P, or National Forest Management and Conservation Plan, which is a ten-year plan, which is prescribed by the Forest Act to be prepared and updated periodically. That guides our year-to-year activities within forest reserves and forest management areas and forests in general. Additionally, as we try to expand the scope of what, of our work and recognizing the importance of forests and swamps and mangroves, we have developed the National Mangrove Swamp and Swamp Forest Management Plan, which works alongside the N F M C P to guide us as to how we should approach the management of forests in Jamaica. And lastly, there is the forest policy, which is the government's policy for forests. And here, we're talking about protected areas and the question may be, well, how does an area become protected? So I just mentioned the various pieces of legislation and policies that govern protected areas, forest protected areas. And when we want to designate an area as protected, we do so under the Forest Act. And in so doing, we look at the various aspects of the area that we wish to protect, biodiversity, soil and resources and so on. Section five of the Act deals with the designation of forest reserves, while section seven deals with forest management areas. The main difference being that forest management areas are typically managed for sustainable use of the resources, whereas forest reserves tend to be more strict for their conservation, for conservation objectives. And here you see listed the different criteria that go into the determination as to whether to designate it and how the area should be used. And that is provided for in section six. So section five and seven deal with forest reserves and forest management areas respectively. Section six sets out what those areas can be used for. And yeah, so that's, that's what's listed in this current slide. No, sorry. Section six two, though, deals with the issue of leasing a forest reserve. So although an area is designated as a forest reserve or a forest management area, it can still be leased, provided that the use that is permitted under that lease is consistent with the, the activities mentioned in the previous slide under section six one. Now, lastly, well, not quite lastly, but approaching the end of the presentation, there are different criteria that one might look at in determining whether to designate an area at all or if doing so, whether it should be a forest reserve or a forest management area. So what we look at is the forest cover and the quality of that forest cover, the existing conditions. So whether the area is disturbed or whether it remains natural and economic opportunities for the use of resources within the area. Within a forest reserve, even if there are economic, economically valuable resources, there would be limited permission to utilize those resources and what we call non-timber forest products. So those are resources that are within a forest, but they're not timber and they're not fruits or, or that kind of thing. So even in a forest reserve, even with those areas, we wouldn't allow, there, there's limited access to such resources once it is declared a forest reserve. And the areas that are declared forest reserves typically are predominantly broadly forest, as mentioned. And there's an absence or very minimal presence of agriculture and other anthropogenic activities. And I've used the term anthropogenic a few times. What we essentially mean by that is simply human influence. So anthropogenic just refers to the impact of humans on an area. Whereas a forest management area, it still has conservation value. It still has importance with respect to ecosystems and our natural environment. But this would, this would more be a secondary forest or a plantation and there would be sustainable, there'd be permission for sustainable use of the resources within a forest management area. So finally, in closing, there is the way that we are able to achieve these activities under our mandate. And this is done through financing for maintenance and conservation. So we have a, a general budget for our, for our activities of approximately one point zero seven billion Jamaican dollars. So that finances all of the activities of the Forestry Department, which would feed into addressing issues with forestry, improving forests and so on. But we also get support from various donors and entities for various projects. So currently, we have approximately one hundred and sixty-six million Jamaican dollars designated, or donated rather, for two projects that are ongoing, the Jamaica Mangrove Plus Project, which is financed by J F, and then the Bioparma Project, which is being funded by the I U C N. And that is how we seek to achieve our activities and our goals. And so I thank you for taking the time to listen and we look forward to your contributions on the policy. On the screen now is some contact information should you need to get in contact with us. Thank you.
And we say thank you to Mr. Cross. Thank you so much, sir, for helping us to understand better about the protected forests or green spaces and our responsibility. And ladies and gentlemen, as you heard Mr. Cross say just now, if you have any questions, please do not be afraid to place them right where you are inside the comment section. We want to hear from you on the ministry's YouTube and Facebook pages at M E G J C underscore J M or on the J I S YouTube and Facebook pages at J I S. We want to hear from you. Please do not be shy. Put your questions there. Our next presenter comes from the National Fisheries Authority. She is Miss Deandra Roberts, Research Officer, Capture Fisheries Division, who will tell us about fish sanctuaries.
Good afternoon. Thank you for that. All protocols observed. So marine protected areas, Jamaica Fish Sanctuaries. The protected areas, most of them, they are managed by the National Fisheries Authority or most commonly called the N F A. So why fish sanctuaries? Fish Sanctuary Establishment is one of the well-known strategies to maintain and manage coastal fisheries resources sustainably and to protect them from over-exploitation. In Jamaica, where overfishing has been demonstrated, right, um, the setting aside of selected marine areas to provide refuge for the fish sanct-, um refuge for species known as fish sanctuaries. In one second, having a bit of technical difficulty here. Okay, so Monroe and his colleagues um made developments through investigations of biological and ecology and fishery dynamics of the import and commercial reef fisheries in coastal waters and the Pedro Banks. Akin and On were the first set, were first set out management plan for the Jamaican fishery resources. The management plan contains a section on the establishment of fish sanctuaries. Later, Akin and On settled for the first time a number of suggested locations for the first fish reserve or protected areas, as they were called. And the map next will show the first set of fish sanctuaries or protected areas that they had. So what's the benefit of a fish sanctuary? They increase fish population affected by overfishing, habitat degradation. Um, they provide a spill over effect, they maintain genetic diversity of marine species within Jamaica waters. They allow for species to reach full sexual maturity, improve the catch per unit efforts of fishermen, including the economics of fishermen as well. Um, improve, improved or increased opportunities for ecotourism and provide an environment for further research and development initiatives. So how do we go about selecting a fish sanctuary? First, we have habitat assessments, which just need to ensure that the area is ecologically okay for a fish sanctuary. We have a series of stakeholder consultations. So the main stakeholders are in agreement with the area that we choose to put the fish sanctuary. And then we create a relationship between a partner and the National Fisheries Authority. How do we manage the fish sanctuary? So typically, there is a public-private partnership with the N F A and the organization. We sign some MOUs. If there is no partner or no NGO readily identified, then the fish will, um, the N F A will assume management of the sanctuary. We provide training, budgetary support, research and development um to these partners as well. So our current fish sanctuary network, we up, we have about twenty fish sanctuaries as of March twenty twenty four. We have two new ones declared this year, that would be Grinch Ben in St. James and Lucy in Lucy Fish Sanctuary in Hanover. They come to a total of ten thousand eight hundred and ninety five point three two hectares. Um, and they are declared by the minister under the orders privileged through section seventeen of the Fisheries Act twenty eighteen. What this means is that if any illegal activity is punishable by law um under this act. For future work, we hope to increase the area for coastal fisheries water to twenty thousand by twenty twenty seven in keeping with the twenty, thirty by thirty um thing that we have going on. This is a map of the, well, this is the listing of the twenty fish sanctuaries that we have, their hectares. And this is a map of where the twenty fish sanctuaries are located. Thank you.
Thank you as well to Ms. Deandra Roberts. Thank you for your presentation. Now, ladies and gentlemen, whenever we speak about the environment, the agency that comes to mind readily is the National Environment and Planning Agency, NEPA. We are now able to invite Ms. Hugh Garcia-Green, Coordinator in the Protected Areas Branch of NEPA to make her presentation on protected areas managed by NEPA.
Hi, good afternoon. All protocols observed. I'll be presenting on the protected areas that are managed by the National Environment and Planning Agency. For a bit of background, the agency's core function is to take the necessary steps for the effective management of Jamaica's physical environment to ensure the conservation, protection, and proper use of its natural resources, as well as the management of protected areas. The National, the National Environment and Planning Agency is responsible for the management of protected areas under three acts. The Natural Resources Conservation Authority Act, which includes national parks, marine parks, and protected areas, of which we have twelve. The Beach Control Act, we have two, and Wildlife Protection Act, which includes game reserves and game sanctuaries, we have twenty. Here we have a map of the protected areas that have been declared under the NRFC Act. We have twelve, as mentioned earlier. Management of protected areas is guided by a management plan that describes and sets out the vision, objectives, and strategies, as well as management plan, management programs, and actions to be implemented over a given period of time. The main management programs are biodiversity conservation, public awareness, education, and outreach, monitoring and enforcement, and governance and administration. The goal of the biodiversity conservation program is to improve and maintain the status of our natural resources. Public awareness, education, and outreach aims to strengthen public awareness and understanding of protected areas, promote sustainable use of resources, and stakeholder support. Patrolling and enforcement achieves a high level of compliance with the laws administered by NEPA, which also includes patrols, both marine and terrestrial. Governance and, and administration provides governance which is collaborative and responsive and to provide the resources required for the efficient and effective management and administration of our protected areas. It also includes our collaboration with our NGOs for management. So for biodiversity conservation, some of the activities are mangrove planting, cleanup activities. We also have waste management programs that we implement within the protected areas, sea turtles monitoring, as well as installation of signs. Patrolling and enforcement, we conduct terrestrial and marine patrols, as mentioned before, to ensure compliance with our regulations. Public awareness, education, and outreach. Um, this includes stakeholder engagement, as well as celebrating various environmental signature days, sensitization, training session with our stakeholders, as well as our social media posts and websites. Collaborations under the Governance and Administration Program. We have agreements for the management of protected areas with Jamaica Conservation and Development Trust, Coastal Caribbean Coastal Area Management Foundation, and the Montego Bay Marine Park Trust to support project implementation. We have multi-stakeholder management committees in areas where there is no NGO present to manage the areas, which strengthens our collaborative efforts. Funding is provided by the Government of Jamaica and the Natural Resources Resource Conservation Authority. And that is the end of the presentation. Thank you.
And we thank you so much, Ms. Green. Thank you for your presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, while implementation is important, it is policy that drives the measures that are to be implemented to protect our environment, and specifically in this case, our protected areas. So at this time, I invite Dr. Tonyanne Miller, Director of Natural Resources in the Environment and Risk Management Branch of the Ministry, where this policy had its genesis, the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, who will be telling us about the overarching policy for Jamaica's Protected Areas System Green Paper and its implications for our sustainability as an island and as a people.
Good afternoon. So today I will be presenting on the overarching policy for Jamaica's Protected Areas System. Your feedback will be used to finalize the policy, and we look forward to your feedback. The policy is available on the Ministry's website and at your parish libraries and municipal corporations. The main goal of the policy is to effectively and equitably manage protected areas for the protection and conservation of biodiversity and cultural heritage, as well as for social and economic benefits. We are guided by the Charter of Fundamental Rights and Freedoms, and section thirteen three L states that we have a right to a healthy environment free of threat and injury. The policy is aligned with Vision twenty thirty, specifically outcomes thirteen and fourteen. Outcome, outcome thirteen looks at sustainable use of natural resources, and outcome fourteen looks at climate change adaptation. The policy is related to several country-led initiatives and international commitments, including the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework, commonly known as the GBF, Agenda twenty thirty, and the Sustainable Development Goals, Goals, the High Ambition Coalition for Nature and People, the Global Ocean Alliance, and the Leaders' Pledge for Nature. As it relates to the High Ambition Coalition, Jamaica is a member, and we seek to protect at least thirty percent of land and oceans by twenty thirty. As it relates to the GBF, we are currently developing national targets aligned with the GBF. And a proposed national target is that Jamaica will protect thirty percent of its terrestrial and marine and coastal areas by twenty twenty five. A protected area is a clearly defined geographical space, recognized, dedicated, and managed through legal or other effective means. And on screen, you'll see the Palisades Port Royal Protected Area, as well as the Black River Protected Area. And these areas are managed for long-term conservation of biodiversity. So they're managed to safeguard biodiversity as well as culture. So there are several values and benefits of protected areas as they provide ecosystem services and goods. So some values and benefits of protected areas include climate regulation, the provision of food and water, as well as opportunities for recreation. And it supports key economic sectors such as health and tourism. So other benefits of protected areas include that it enhances mental well-being and it provides habitats for a variety of plant and animal species. Other benefits on screen shown are the protection of coastal and marine communities. So protected areas are very important for that, as well as enhancing food security and water security. Protected areas also maintain and create jobs, and as mentioned before, they safeguard uh biodiversity and culture. Approximately twenty-two point seven one percent of our la-, of our land and fifteen point four seven percent of our waters are protected. And in recent years, we have had designations under the Natural Resources Conservation Authority Act. And the areas that have been recently declared are the Black River Landscape and Seascape, and that was in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty two, the Cockpit Country Protected Area. And in twenty twenty three, the Pedro Keys and Surrounding Waters Protected Area. Additionally, in twenty twenty three, there were also fifteen ecologically sensitive areas declared by the Prime Minister. And four of these areas will soon be declared as protected areas. Some of the threats to protected areas include timber harvesting, land use change, invasive alien species, pollution, climate change, and destructive fishing and farming practices. Some relevant policies and plans that are related to the policy include the National Land Policy of Jamaica, which is currently being updated. Recent policies and plans include the National Swamp and Mangrove Management Plan, as well as the Ecosystem Restoration Plan. And we have several policies and plans which are outlined in the document. Some of them include the Watersheds Policy for Jamaica, the Climate Change Policy Framework, and the Protected Area System Master Plan. Some of the main pieces of legislation related to the policy are the Fisheries Act, the Forest Act, and the Forest Regulations, the J N H D Act, and the Natural Resources Conservation Authority Act and its subsidiary legislation, which are the Protected Areas Regulations, the National Parks Regulations, and the Marine Parks Regulations. Other important pieces of legislation are the Wildlife Protection Act and the Beach Control Act. Some key stakeholders involved in protected areas management are the National Fisheries Authority and its fishermen cooperatives, the Forestry Department and its L F M Cs, which are the local forest management committees, the National Environment and Planning Agencies, working in collaboration with CCAM, J C D T, and Montego Bay Marine Park. Other entities include the J N H D and U D C. Next, we'll move into the draft policy. And we'll look at the vision, the six objectives, as well as the monitoring and evaluation framework. So Jamaica, the vision of the policy is that Jamaica's Protected Area System is ecologically representative and sustainably managed, preserving its ecological functions and services, and conserving its rich biological diversity and cultural heritage for the benefit of present and future generations. On screen, you'll see the different types of protected areas that are in the Protected Area System. And these are currently exist, such as the Forest Reserves and Fish Sanctuaries, will be aligned with the equivalent I U C N categories. So for example, forest reserves will be aligned with Strict Nature Reserve, which is a cat, I U C N category. So on screen, you'll also see the arrangement for the different entities in the Protected Areas System. You'll see the ministries and their agencies, as well as the P A C, the PAT, which is the Protected Areas Committee, and Cabinet being the ultimate decision-making body. So we have Ministry with Responsibility for Environment, along with its agencies, the Forestry Department and NEPA. We have Ministry with Responsibility for Fisheries and its agency, the N F A. And Ministry with Responsibility for Culture and its agency, the J N H D. And all of these entities will work in protecting our protected areas. So the Protected Areas Committee will be the main body for the institutional coordination of the Protected Area System, and they will continue to work. So currently, they're responsible for implementing the Protected Area System Master Plan, and they will continue to do so. So the committee will be restructured, and its capacity will also be increased. The Protected Areas Committee will be responsible for the implementation of various policies and plans related to protected areas. This policy will inform the updated Protected Area System Master Plan. So let's move into the implementation plan, and the implementation plan can be found on pages seventy-nine to ninety-three of the policy, and it highlights the different objectives, strategies, activities, indicators, estimated costs for the different activity, as well as the responsible entities. So we'll go through each of the objectives, and there are six of them. So let's start off with Objective One. So Objective One is to develop enabling policies and legislation and strengthen the governance arrangement, and this is for us to have a comprehensive Protected Areas System. Kindly note that these are just some of the activities in the policy. The policy has a wide range of strategies and activities, so these are just a selected few. So let's look at Strategy one point one. Based on consultations that we've had before, Strategy one point two is now Strategy one point one. So Strategy one point one is to implement mechanisms for improved governance, and we want to enshrine the Protected Areas Committee in the Protected Areas Legislation. We also want to amend the National Parks Regulations and the Marine Parks Regulation, respectively, there's a council and a marine advisory board. So we want to, the Protected Areas Committee, to now deal with matters that are usually dealt with by the council and the marine advisory board. Other activities include increasing the number of LFMCs and enhancing their capacity, as well as increasing active involvement of NGOs and CBOs in the planning and management of protected areas. And we have here that we have several entities that will be involved in this process, and these include the Ministry with Responsibility for the Environment, Ministry with Responsibility for Local Government, NEPO, JNHD, NFA, Forestry Department, all in collaboration with the relevant NGOs and CBOs. Objective one point two, which looks at developing and reviewing and strengthening existing legislation and policies related to protected areas management. We will have the promulgation of the overarching Protected Areas Legislation, as well as the amendment of the Forest Act and the Beach Control Act. We want to mainstream the biodiversity biodiversity conservation and protected area management in sector plans and programs. Responsible entities include the Ministry with Responsibility for the Environment in collaboration with other ministries. Next, let's move on to Objective Two, and it states to build and maintain a representative, interconnected, resilient Protected Area System that maintains ecological processes and systems, promotes human wellbeing, and conserves, protects, and preserves the country's natural and cultural heritage. Objective two point one, so we want to declare and designate protected areas that are underrepresented. So activities include incorporating protected areas in development orders, local sustainable development plans, and strategies. Other activities include where lands have cultural assets, that an endorsement be placed on the title indicating same, as well as identifying and including national biodiversity targets in the updated National Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan. Another activity is to implement the National Mangrove and Swamp Forest Management Plan. Strategy two point two looks at integrating nature-based solutions into disaster risk reduction efforts, strengthening disaster resilience at the local and community levels. So this involves reviewing the disaster risk management plans to ensure that nature-based solutions and ecosystem-based approaches are taken into account. Other activities include developing and executing capacity-building programs and mainstreaming the disaster risk reduction strategies in protected areas. Next, we move on to Objective Three, which focuses on improving protected area management effectiveness. Activities include preparing, revising, and implementing management plans and preservation schemes to include ecosystem restoration activities. We also want to prepare and implement business plans for protected areas, and this is to facilitate green and blue investments, which will help with the management of protected areas. Strategy three point two, we want to periodically assess the species status and identify the appropriate strategies to ensure their conservation. So activities on the day strategy will include assessing the status of different species, whether they be keystone, threatened, endangered, or rare, and then putting in place the effective conservation strategy to manage them. Objective three, Strategy three point three focuses on monitoring and enforcement. So we want to increase monitoring activities in protected areas and identify the different gaps for improvement, as well as introduce effective use of technology where appropriate for the monitoring and enforcement in the different protected areas. We move on to Objective Four, which focuses on public education and awareness, and it states to strengthen communication, education, and public awareness, and enhance and secure the involvement of local communities and other stakeholders in the conservation and protection of the Protected Area System. Strategy four point one, increase public education and awareness. So we want to develop and implement different programs, strategies, and plans to increase the public's awareness about the benefits of protected areas and the Protected Area System. Other activities include developing an ABS legislation for access to genetic resources and for the fair and equitable sharing of the benefits deriving from those genetic resources and the associated traditional knowledge. Another activity on the Strategy four point two is to utilize a variety of mechanisms and programs to facilitate stakeholders' involvement, taking into consideration youth and gender equity. Objective Five, which focuses on financing, it states to provide adequate and sustainable financing for protected areas. Activities include developing and implementing sustainable finance plan for protected areas and identifying potential sources of funding. So we want to increase contribution to the National Conservation Trust Fund of Jamaica, as well as develop resource mobilization strategy, as well as implement it. Objective Six, ensure that scientific and traditional knowledge contribute to the establishment and effectiveness of protected areas. Activities include continuing to pursue formal agreements and partnerships in research, as well as developing a national scientific research agenda, and developing a database which consists of the status of the island's flora, fauna, and cultural resources, and all of this information will be used to inform decision-making. We also want to develop a framework to promote scientific research and put in place the appropriate framework, and the framework relates to free prior and informed consent and ensuring that the benefits derived from research is, the benefits are shared equitably. So here we have the Monitoring and Evaluation Framework. This is just an outline. The Monitoring and Evaluation Framework includes the expected results, proposed indicators, targets, means of verifications, and methods of data collection, and this can be found on page ninety-four of the policy. Just to note that comments can be sent to ermb@megjc.gov.jm, so that's ermb.gov.jm, and these comments should be submitted by July thirty-eighth. Thank you.
And we say big thanks to Dr. Toni Ann Miller. Thank you for your presentation on the overarching policy for Jamaica's Protected Area System Green Paper. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to say big thanks to Minister Matthew Samoud, Permanent Secretary Arlene Williams, and all our presenters for their informative and enlightening presentations on our protected areas. Remember that we want to hear from you, so place your comments and questions on the ministry's YouTube and Facebook pages. That's at EMGJC underscore JM, or on the JIS YouTube and Facebook pages at JIS. Now for our next segment, we will be making a couple of changes or lineup on the stage. Joining us are Mr. Stephen Smichael, Principal Director, Capture Fisheries Division with the National Fisheries Authority. Also joining us is Ms. Andrea Donaldson, Senior Manager, Conservation and Protection Subdivision, National Environment and Planning Agency, and Ms. Gillian Guthrie, Chief Technical Director, Development Planning and Environment Policy and Management Division at the MEGJC. Welcome to the ladies and the gentlemen. Now, audience, this is a segment where we take your questions and comments from our platforms to our panelists. Your input will help to determine the health of Jamaica's protected areas for present and future generations, so please feel free to participate. But remember that we will only be taking questions specifically relating to our protected areas this afternoon. So while we prepare ourselves for this, please enjoy this feature on Crown Jewels: Ecological Sensitive Areas of Jamaica.
Whenever someone thinks of a country that has captivating beauty, they think of Jamaica. Jamaica is a tapestry of ecological treasures, treasures that the government under the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, MEGJC, saw fit to name ecologically sensitive areas, or ESAs. These areas woven into the fabric of the island play a crucial role in preserving its natural heritage. Welcome to Crown Jewels: Ecologically Sensitive Areas of Jamaica. Ecologically sensitive areas are regions characterized by their unique ecosystems and biodiversity. They serve as vital habitats, ensuring the survival of numerous plants and animal species. But what do the ecologically sensitive areas really contribute to Jamaica?
So these areas, because of the ecological significance, it's flagged for its high biodiversity. And the biodiversity, it really contributes to your everyday life in terms of building resilience, in terms of coastal resilience. It offers habitats for some of the species that we like to enjoy. So if you think about even eating fish, the nurture areas within some of these mangroves and habitats that are found within the ESA contribute to your livelihood. They also offer ecosystem services, resilience against extreme weather events, resilience against coastal erosion, as well as acting as barrier against tide wave energy.
And how were they chosen?
Well, the initial list that was endorsed and approved by the government of Jamaica came about as a recommendation from the National Environment and Planning Agency in consultation, actually, with the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, the Urban Development Corporation, and the Forestry Department, because we would have recognized that in our planning and development processes, these areas would have been the subject of development consideration. And looking at the environmental sensitivities in this area, we propositioned, we propositioned to the government that maybe we should be looking to give policy directives, implementing measures to safeguard these areas against the level of development that would significantly degrade the habitats.
As we navigate through Jamaica's verdant landscapes, the spotlight turns to the Crown Jewels of Ecological Preservation, the fifteen ecologically sensitive areas. Each of these areas is not just a piece of land. It's a living testament to the rich biodiversity that paints Jamaica's canvas.
The government of Jamaica has identified fifteen sites island-wide as ecologically sensitive areas. The earmarking of these sites that the government accelerates action on environmental commitments, both nationally and globally. ESAs are characterized as having critical ecological features which cannot be easily replaced. Impacts of these areas can negatively affect rare and distant species, ecosystem services, livelihoods, and the quality of life. The protection offered to these areas will contribute to the further strengthening of the natural resilience of the country and provide for sustainable use of Jamaica's natural resources in support of national economic objectives.
These fifteen ecologically sensitive areas, like jewels in Jamaica's crown, are not just geographical wonders. They are guardians of biodiversity, contributing to all resilience. The Jamaican government, led by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, is committed to taking care of the environment. They understand how important it is to balance progress and preserve nature. To achieve this, they have created a detailed plan for environmental protection and sustainable development. The policies forged by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation are a testament to Jamaica's commitment to harmonizing economic advancement with ecological preservation. Within this blueprint, three pivotal policies stand as pillars of change. The Watershed Policy.
The Watershed Policy for Jamaica, which is a Green Paper, is essentially designed to develop policy strategies towards the safeguard of the terrestrial area and the associated waterways. It outlines the government's direction for protecting these areas. It speaks about the collaboration between the various responsible agencies, because the work extends beyond the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation and the National Environment and Planning Agency. We have other major stakeholders, such as Water Resources Authority, the Forestry Department, who are all doing work. So basically, it's acting as a measure to coordinate all of the respective activities for these various entities, so that we are actually achieving the goals outlined in the policy, which is to safeguard our watershells for healthy livelihoods.
The Updated Climate Change Policy Framework.
So the Climate Change Policy Framework, which was developed by the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, led by the Climate Change Branch, outlines the strategies that Jamaica will be implemented towards meeting the international commitments that have been outlined to combat the impacts of climate change. It outlines national strategies across various sectors, including environmental sectors, transport sectors, looking at air emission issues that would need to be tackled in the short to medium term in order for us to meet the international commitments, as well as meet our national policies, including the Vision twenty twenty that has been outlined and permitted by the government of Jamaica.
And the Groundbreaking Emissions Policy Framework.
The Emissions Policy Framework is a national policy that was developed to ensure that we have a more coordinated and structured approach to reducing emissions from harmful substances in Jamaica, and to address air pollution from sources that are directly caused by.
from sources that are directly caused by us humans.
In the heart of this ecological symphony, Jamaica is orchestrating a bold movement, a countdown, not just to a date, but to a future, where the harmony between humanity and nature resounds louder than ever before, aiming for a remarkable milestone.
In the financial year 2023-24, government commenced or started commencement upon preparation of a new protected areas policy for Jamaica, which will replace the nineteen ninety-seven policy. Thereafter, the government will pursue the promulgation of long overdue omnibus protected areas legislation that will govern over three hundred and fifty declared protected areas in the country, including fish sanctuaries, national and marine parks, and cultural and heritage sites. Mr. President, in strengthening legislative framework governing protected areas, the government promulgated new protected areas regulations under the Natural Resources Conservation Authority Act in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. President, I am proud to hold these gazetted regulations up this morning as they have just come from the printed office, Mr. President.
As we witness the symbolic tree-taking root, it symbolizes the government's commitment to nurturing prosperity across generations. A flourishing ecosystem becomes the cornerstone of a prosperous nation. The story doesn't end here. It's an ongoing journey of cultivation and care. Jamaica is fostering a sustainable legacy where every ecologically sensitive area and policy is a seed, contributing to a sustainable future.
And thank you so much for staying with us. Thank you, thank you. We are here for the next segment. We are here with our panelists, and they are about to answer your questions. You've been dropping them in the comments section. We thank you so much for engaging with us. So we ask that you keep the engagement going. We're going to be trying to answer as many questions as possible during the duration of this particular segment. So welcome again to our panelists. Good afternoon to you all. I'm going to be starting with the first question being posed to Mr. Cross. Sir, the question asks, let me find it properly. It says, what are the benefits that the forestry department provides when an area is designated? This person says designed, but we're going to say designated as a forestry reserve?
Thank you for that question. It's a good question. So I'll answer it in two parts. Essentially, the designation is illegal protection. So once it's designated as a forest reserve, it means that certain activities are prohibited. So for example, if you cut a tree, if you cut down a tree within a forest reserve, you're liable to conviction and a fine of up to five hundred thousand dollars or imprisonment. Now, apart from that, there's also the management aspect of it. So once an area is designated as a forest reserve, what the forestry department and the government is essentially saying is this area is going to be managed for conservation purposes. And as a result, steps will be taken to include it within a forest management plan, to remove invasive species, to plant areas that have been deforested. Our teams also go out and carve out what we call forest fire lines to ensure that fires within a forested area don't spread and so on. Now, the second aspect, which I'm not sure if the member of the public intended, is the benefit if it's a piece of private land. So you can also declare or have designated private lands as forest reserves or forest management areas. When that happens, basically, a person, a member of the public who has forest lands, they can approach the forestry department and say, hey, I'd like to have my land designated. When that happens, they would prepare also a forest management plan. And for every year that they're compliant with that plan and the requirements under the legislation, then they would be eligible for a certificate for remittance of property tax for that area. And there are other incentives as well. So we provide technical support to persons involved in forestry. And we also provide seedlings, usually at a cost, but in certain circumstances, free of charge. So there are various benefits to the designation.
All right, so Cross, I'm going to still stay with you with this next question. They're asking who conducts the patrols in these areas? It says concerned about enforcement.
Okay, so also part of our mandate, we have an enforcement mandate. It falls under my portfolio. And we have several teams of forest officers or forest arrangers. Each of those teams is led by a senior compliance officer, who is led by, and the group of senior compliance officers, there are four of them, for four different regions. And they are led by the senior director of enforcement. Now, on a daily basis, we go out, when I say we, I mean they. But the forest officers, I go out occasionally, but they do so routinely. We'll go out into the forest reserves and patrol to determine if there are any encroachments, agricultural encroachments within a forest reserve or forest management area, to try and identify offenses. So persons cutting trees within our protected areas or harvesting other forest resources, kindling, lighting fires, and that kind of issue. They look for those activities. And if they catch persons in the act, then those persons can be arrested and charged. And we have taken several persons to court as a result of that.
For your answer. All right, this one is for NEPA. Entities have the capacity, financial and human, to implement the overarching policy. What are the plans to implement the policy beyond the M and E section of the policy?
So the policy is not only NEPA, it is all the agencies that declare protected area. And I believe Dr. Miller, in her presentation, said that the Protected Areas Committee would be important in the implementation of the policy. From a standpoint of protected areas management, there's never sufficient human resources or financial resources for the protected area. So the agency always work in partnership with non-governmental organizations or create committees where we have government agencies, non-governmental organizations that work to help us identify where we need to prioritize and where we need to put our funding. It must be recognized that there is international funding out there, but a lot of it always go to non-governmental organizations. So we try to partner with NGOs. And where we do have resources, the resources try to support their redangers, department managers, their accountants, certain aspects of the management team for the protected area. But there's never sufficient funding for managing. So we always try to work in partnership with other organizations.
All right, thank you for answering that. I want to bring in here Ms. Guthrie on this same conversation about costing and monies. The question is, on average, what is a total amount of money required to effectively manage the respective protective areas? Do you have an answer for that even?
No, we don't have an answer for that. The audience would have understood, based on the presentations that we had today, that we have over three hundred protected areas declared under law. And they're under four different, what we call protected area managers, the National Fisheries Authority, NEPA, the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, and the Forestry Department. And they all have budgets that they put towards the management of their respective protected areas. It is a huge sum that is required. And we're talking billions of dollars that is required to manage all of these protected areas. The idea is to look for different sources of funding. So funding already comes from the consolidated fund to these protected area managers. And as Ms. Donaldson said, in partnership with NGOs and CBOs who have delegated authority, they also too try to do some resource mobilization. But we are looking to other sources of funding, like we are looking towards incentives to NGOs and CBOs and the private sector to invest in protected areas, do ecotourism type activities within protected areas to generate money. We're looking at implementation of user fees where they don't exist already. We're looking at how we can sustainably utilize the resources within our protected area so that they can in turn support and maintain the biodiversity within these areas. So we're looking at different, different sources of funding to see how we can best supplement and complement what the government already provides to the protected areas managers to do the work that we need to do.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Guthrie. I want to ask Mrs. Lorna Bailey about the challenges in managing the protected areas. We're talking about the national heritage sites.
Okay, thank you for that. We do have our challenges in managing these sites. And one of the challenges is whereby, you know, persons, you know, they tend to want to go and squat on these sites. And we have to send out our officers who do the monitoring of these sites. And that is one of the challenges that we have. Also, the slash and clear, the burning, right? When persons are clearing sites, you know, want to go in and farm on these properties. So what we do through our public education campaign, you know, when our officers go out into the field, once we get notification or, you know, we are notified as to some illegal activities happening in those areas, we send the officers out. You have officers in the Estate Management and Business Development Department that from time to time monitor these sites. So once we go in, you know, we talk to the persons once we, you know, catch them and so forth. And some of them have been very cooperative. And whereby we have extreme cases, you know, the perpetrators, you know, we have to, you know, prosecute them, you know, through the legal department and so on. And we have, you know, quite a few cases in the courts and so on. But those are some of the challenges that we have. But from time to time, we have been able to mitigate against those things. And we just deal with it as they come.
Right. Ms. Bailey, you know, I'm very happy that we're having this discussion in this town hall for the persons who are not every day looking at the protected areas or knowledgeable and that information, you know, doesn't come across their desks every single day. Sometimes they are very much unaware of the protected areas in the country and more so the fact that we have over three hundred of them. In terms of the communication, though, that our people will understand their responsibility, do you think that that is an area that needs more attention? How we get that information in a way that is understandable to the everyday Jamaican? That even though you may be living in this area, it's actually a protected area? And so these are the steps and measures that you should keep in mind?
Yes, definitely. We need to improve on that in terms of the public education and getting, letting persons be aware, letting them know that, you know, the importance, why these sites must be protected and must be sustained for years to come and for generation. Now, in terms of us getting the information out there, we use our social media handles. We are on Twitter. We are on Instagram or X, formerly Twitter. We are on Instagram. We are on Facebook. And from time to time, we do meetings. Because just a few weeks ago, we were in Port Royal where we had a town hall meeting out there on the ground. So we use these various mediums, you know, to transmit the information to the public. And also, we are very careful in how the medium that we use because we have to put the information in such a way that it caters to the older generation, the younger generation, and so on. Even in our schools, where we do public education in the schools, we use that medium as well to bring the message across and to inform and educate persons that these are protected areas, you know, and we have some do's and don'ts of what to do and what not to do in these protected areas.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Bailey. And I want to bring in at this time, Mr. Stephen. Sir, Mrs. Michael, sir, your area is with fisheries. And I know that this is an area that you are absolutely passionate about. I remember speaking to you some, I think, a year ago or so about the same thing. I want to ask the same question about the challenges in terms of managing the fish sanctuaries.
Thank you very much, Nebby. It is challenging, and we do face the same issues that many of our partner agencies do. And that is in terms of resources, financial resources and human resources. We should be aware that the maritime space is significantly larger than what we have as land space. And therefore, the coverage in terms of what we'd have to look at is much wider. So it brings for us issues regards to enforcement. The vessels that we need to go out there would be significant in terms of the numbers. The cost of fuel for these vessels is also high. The number of persons that we can get to go to sea to work both day and night, you know, that cost is significant. So in terms of managing our sanctuaries in particular, the issues really are one of having adequate resources to be out there twenty-four seven to ensure that not just fishers, but the other persons with other interests are not illegally within the sanctuary space.
Yeah, thank you so much for that, sir. Very good point. All right, Courtney Dixon, how I believe it is, is asking, do ecologically sensitive areas differ from other types of protected areas which already allow for low-impact developments and are aimed at conserving biodiversity? You want to take that one, Miss Guthrie? Go ahead.
Thank you for that question. And as Dr. Miller would have said in her presentation, the Most Honorable Prime Minister, who is also the Minister of the Environment, he had designated fifteen such areas across the island. And that designation was to allow for us, for all the regulatory authorities and the general public to recognize that these particular areas are sensitive. They are sensitive in terms of their ecological value. And the ecological value is not something foreign from us. It is how we support our life and livelihoods. So the Prime Minister, his wisdom, he designated fifteen of them. And the idea is that the protected area managers, NEPA, Forestry Department, the National Fisheries Authority, the Jamaica National Heritage Trust, as appropriate, will then utilize their legislation to declare them as protected areas under law. And so that will give them legal force. So the idea too that the Prime Minister had was that in, there are certain types of activities that will not be allowed in these ecologically sensitive areas. So high-intensity developments, he said, will not be allowed. He also talked about mining, he said, would be prohibited in these ecologically sensitive areas. So the Prime Minister himself has already determined the types of activities that will be prohibited in these areas. And he has sent the signal to the regulatory authorities, as well as to the general public, as to how these areas should be recognized and dealt with.
Okay, Ms. Guthrie, I'm going to stay with you for this next question. It's asking, what are some of the investment opportunities for the private sector to support protected area management?
Excellent. So, and we really would like the private sector to come on board because, of course, the government alone cannot do it. So we are looking to the private sector for ecotourism type activities. We're looking to the private sector for even nutraceuticals. You know, the protected areas are rich in biodiversity. So we're looking for environmentally sensitive investments. So we're not looking for investments that will mow down and have us have biodiversity loss. We are looking for investments that will enhance the conservation measures that we are going to be putting in place and have those measures in turn support investments. So we are, this is a call to the private sector to partner with the government in this way, to have opportunities, to identify those opportunities that will enhance the protected areas. The fish sanctuaries, for instance, the ones that the JHT also has with their heritage sites, et cetera, the forestry department with their forest reserves. I mean, there are opportunities for the private sector to be engaged. And so this is a call to them through the policy and otherwise, for them to be hand and glove with us in terms of how we manage the island's protected areas.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guthrie. Dewanis is saying he has a suggestion as well on the same topic. He says, new funding, time for GOJ to collect from tourists, specifically for conservation and cultural protection and management. Studies have shown that they are willing to pay. Yeah.
So, yes, and we thank him for that. So the issue of leveraging So, yes, and, and we thank him for that. So the issue of leveraging, it would be like taxes from the tourists would be at something that we would have to discuss with the Ministry of Tourism as well as the Ministry of Finance. So, so all ideas, all recommendations can be entertained with the draft policy. We are looking for innovative financing mechanisms that will help us to, to, you know, protect the, the system and to maintain the conservation value of these protected areas. So all ideas, all recommendations will contend. And so we invite persons to, to provide us with, with their thoughts on, on these matters.
All right. Wendy has a thought here. She says, over the past 45 or more years, there have been numerous studies and plans for a system of protected areas in Jamaica with considerable input and effort from scientists and conservation NGOs. She says, I would like to see those efforts referred to in the current policy process. Yeah.
Right. So currently, we have what we call a protected areas committee. And that protected areas committee has not been functional. So our idea is to put that protected areas committee in law. So when Dr. Miller made her presentation, she would have made reference to what we call the PAC, the Protected Areas Committee. And that PAC would be multi-sector, multi-stakeholder body that will help us with the decision-making process in terms of protected areas. So we are going to be inviting NGOs, CBOs, and scientists to be members of, of that PAC. And that will help the government in this decision-making process. So yes, Wendy, yes, she knows all the struggles that we have been through, but that is one of the things that we are promoting in the new draft policy.
All right. Thank you so much for your input, Wendy. Emma Lewis is saying, when will Jamaica sign the United Nations SPA, I believe it's called, Specially Protected Area and Wildlife Protocol? She says here, which has its HQ, its headquarters in Jamaica, ironically.
So this is one of the challenges we have had, but it has not fallen off the government's agenda. When Jamaica ratifies any international agreement where we have legally binding commitments, we must have legislative framework in place to allow us to comply. And so the ministry in collaboration with NEPA is currently working on the amendment of the Wildlife Protection Act. You would have heard in the presentation recently, we have, we're going to make one, one amendment shortly, and, and this is an urgent matter, to increase the fines and custodial sentences under the Wildlife Protection Act. So that will be the first amendment that we will entertain. But the idea though, is that the ministry will embark upon an overall amendment of the act. And that will allow the country to, to be able to, to ratify. Of course, ratification of any international instrument is a prerogative of the cabinet. And so the, we are going to make sure that we put all the necessary things in place to allow the cabinet to consider the matter.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guthrie. And thank you again, Emma, for your question. All right. Troy Franklin is asking, regarding the marine resources, mainly coral reefs, which are currently being stressed in Jamaica, what percentage of them are currently within protected areas and are most of them directly managed? I'm going to pose this one to Mr. Smichael and Ms. Donaldson, maybe could chime in as well. Go ahead, Sir Smichael.
All right. Thanks for that. That's a challenging question in that we don't have sufficient data yet to, to give a specific response in terms of the percentage. What I can say is that our fish sanctuaries do, are comprised of a lot of coral reef areas. And to date, we do have 10,800 hectares of, of marine space that is protected as fish sanctuaries. So when we look at the broader picture in terms of what that represents, right now, that's about 7% of our fisher waters down to 100 meters. So that's it, that's the best that we can do at this point in terms of a spatial coverage. But the work continues to look at more details regarding spatial coverage, what areas of reef that might be comprised within that, mangrove, seagrass. So we do have projects that are going on now that will give us more information in terms of spatially what percentages of various habitats are protected.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Donaldson, you would like to add anything else?
No, I'll agree with Mr. Smichael. It, it's been very difficult to say what percentage, but for every marine protected area declared either under the Fisheries Act or the Naturals Versus Conservation Authority Act, there are coral reefs. And we must note that all our coral reefs are under stress due to climate change. Bleaching has occurred as the sea temperature rises. And so while we may put in a lot of effort to protect our coral reef, a lot of the impact may be external and beyond our efforts to protect.
All right. I'm going to stay with you, Ms. Donaldson. We want to talk about the next step once the policy is finalized for NEPA. What does that look like?
Sorry, I have to...
Think about it some more?
Not really. I mean, for us, it'd be more directional because we'll still continue our programs. We know we have four new protected areas to declare. But we will also know that we have an implementation plan that we will now incorporate into the operational and corporate plans of the agency to strengthen the protected area system that we actually manage and that we know we need to again increase our partnership. And that partnership is with non-governmental organization and private sector. So a lot of the activities that are within the policy are things that we already do, but we will now be more targeted in what our efforts are, ensuring that we are managing the protected areas and ensuring that persons who are within the protected areas understand the importance that it can still have sustainable use of the protected area, but we're managing it for future generations.
Okay. I think it's a good question to send down. It's a Mr. Cross. Yes, sir, you could actually take this one as well.
Okay. So I think that the policy would also be beneficial and provide direction at the Forestry Department. The, as we've been saying, the essence of the policy is really to ensure a coordinated and efficient approach, complementary approach to protected areas management between the various entities that are responsible for it. So with the passage of the policy, we would have an active role to play on the Protected Areas Committee. It speaks to rotating chairmanship. So at times, we'd be playing a leadership role and at times we would be more of a, you know, supporting role. But at all times, the policy would be guiding the direction of what we do and it would allow our efforts to complement the efforts of the J N H T and NEPA and the National Fisheries Authority. So it would provide us with direction and complementary management.
All right. Mrs. Bailey?
Yes. It will definitely allow us, all the agencies involved, it will strengthen the partnership that we have. And it will help us, you know, to have, let us be more focus-driven on everything that we do to protect these areas because it is not easy to protect these areas. And I mean, this is Jamaica, we all know, you know. But at the same time, the policy will allow us to stay focused and it will provide direction definitely and help to just strengthen the partnership so that we can protect these areas for the sustainability and to, in order to promote the areas as well and preserve them for future generations, definitely.
Thank you for your answer. Mr. Smichael?
For the National Fisheries Authority, really, this policy allows a more integrated approach among our partner agencies in the whole matter of how we declare marine protected areas and, and how we get the public and the users on board and involved in the management of these spaces. And what it also does is to reduce perhaps what I'd consider conflict between different users of the marine spaces whenever, you know, we, whenever we have, for example, fish sanctuaries declared versus marine parks or protected areas, very often the consultative approach is not as what we would like. And therefore, you may have negative interactions with fishers who perhaps are not consulted because a different set of criteria were looked at in establishing a marine protected area. So this policy will allow a level of integration between entities so that whenever we're going to declare a protected area, we will consider a wider set of stakeholders that need to be consulted and brought on board in the, in the, in the declaration of these spaces.
Absolutely. Ms. Guthrie, I want to pose this question as well to you. It's a lot to consider.
Yes. So for us, it's, it's, it's multifold. So for us, it is an opportunity for us to identify the gaps in the policy and legislative framework governing protected areas. It's an opportunity for us to look at some of the issues like the resource mobilization that we've been speaking about, how to build the capacity of these protected area managers so that monitoring and enforcement can be further enhanced, how to have partnerships amongst the protected area managers, but with other key stakeholders like the NGO, CBOs, the scientists. And we need, we need an avenue where we can gain more information on what is in our protected area. So data and information is going to be critical. And so who are the holders of this data and information? NGOs, CBOs, the general public, traditional knowledge, scientists. So that partnership is going to be extremely important for us to forge with government so that we can manage the protected areas very well. But one of the key, key things that I think is, is important for the policy and what we're trying to advocate is knowledge. And knowledge is power. And we want to put the power in, back in the hands of the people if they didn't know that they had it. You have the, the power to advocate for what you want for your protected areas. It doesn't belong to the government. The government has declared it under law and so has recognized it as special areas. But how it is that you interface with these protected areas, how it is that you manage those protected areas, how do you partner with other stakeholders in conserving the biodiversity within these areas is something that we all need to discuss and, and agree on. So I wanted to say that the policy, one of the main things with the policy is to give knowledge to the people and hopefully that the general public will use that knowledge in turn to advocate and to help us, us in managing the protected areas more efficiently and effectively.
And a policy like this in terms of timeline?
So we have now completed with the town hall our consultations on it. So we had consultations with the public sector agencies, including many of the protected areas managers, and to just thank them very much because at all the consultations, they have been partnering with the ministry. And we also had consultations with the private sector, NGOs and the CBOs, and today with the general public. We are going to be reviewing all comments received, all recommendations received, and reviewing the document in light of those comments and recommendations, finalize that document, send it back to cabinet for, for its consideration. And we're hopeful that we will have something done by, by the end of December at the latest, no hurricanes and any of that impeding our progress. But yes, let us just say though, with, with certainty, that Jamaica will have a new protected areas policy before the end of the, the current financial year. We end our financial year in March of 2025. So Jamaica will have a new protected areas policy before that time.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about ready to wrap the proceedings, but I want to ask my panelists to just remind the public where they can submit additional comments, questions, contributions, suggestions, starting with you, Sir Smichael. Where can they contact your agency?
At the National Fisheries Authority, you can go to our website, which is fisheries.gov.jm or contact us at 923-8811, it goes up to three. Also, they can go to the ministry's website, that's the Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Mining, and follow the links to the National Fisheries Authority.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. You can contact the Jamaica National Heritage Trust. We are located at 79 Duke Street. You can call us 876-922-128728. Or you can send us a WhatsApp on 876-227-3310. You can send us an email, publicrelations@jnhd.com. And you can also view us or send us a message on Instagram or X. And that's how you can contact us. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can contact the Forestry Department via telephone, 876-618-3205. We have a website, forestry.gov.jm. And we, you can also email us at fdinfo@forestry.gov.jm. And we're also, you can also follow us on Facebook or Instagram.
So I don't have all the handles written down. However, our website is nepa.gov.jm. All the social media is on it. Our telephone number is 876-754-7540. And you can always send comments to ceo@nepa.gov.jm.
There we go.
And just to say that the policy, the draft policy is on the ministry's website. So that's www.megjc.gov.jm. You can send your comments on the draft policy at ERMB, which is Environment and Risk Management Branch, at megjc.gov.jm. And, and, and just to say too, that the hard copy of the policy is, of the draft policy is at all the parish libraries and all the municipal corporations. So please feel free to reach out to us if you have not been able to have access to, to the document and we will provide it. And we, however, Debbie would like the comments as soon as possible because if we want to meet that deadline, to finish before the end of the financial year, we need to get those comments in as quickly as possible. So I would say if we could have the comments by the end of August, that would be, put the ministry in a good stead to be able to revise the policy and send it back to cabinet for its consideration.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guthrie. Ladies and gentlemen, I think that brings us to the end of our panel discussion. Again, we'd like to say big thanks to our panelists, starting with Mr. Stephen Smichael, Principal Director, Capture Fisheries Division, National Fisheries Authority. Want to say big thanks as well to Mrs. Lorna Bailey, the Director of Public Education, Public Relations and Communication at the Jamaica National Heritage Trust. And big thanks to Mr. Philip Cross, Principal Director, Legal and Forest Enforcement Services Division at the Forestry Department. Want to say thanks to Ms. Andrea Donaldson, Senior Manager, Conservation and Protection Subdivision, National Environment and Planning Agency, NEPA. And of course, big thanks to Ms. Gillian Guthrie, Chief Technical Director, Development, Planning and Environment Policy and Management Division at the M E G J C. Ladies and gentlemen, big thanks as well to our presenters for today, Senator the Honourable Matthew Samuda. And we also want to say big thanks to Permanent Secretary Arlene Williams. And of course, Ms. Lorna Bailey, I did mention her before. Want to say thanks as well to Dr. Tonyanne Miller and Ms. Hugh Garcia-Green. We want to say thanks to you for joining us and staying with us and for sending in your questions, your comments, your thoughts. We could not have done this town hall meeting without you. As you heard, Ms. Guthrie, we want to hear from you before the end of August. So please make sure that you are part of this big movement. Special thanks here to the technical team at the Jamaica Information Service and the Public Broadcasting Corporation of Jamaica. And finally, again, thank you all for joining us. Want to say you can go on to the M E G J C and J I S YouTube and Facebook platforms and continue the discussions there. And also, you're able to read the overarching protected areas policy green paper on the ministry's website at www.megjc.gov.jm. You can also email us your thoughts at ermb@megjc.gov.jm with the subject line, overarching protected areas policy for Jamaica. Written comments in hard copy may be sent to the Environment and Risk Management Branch at the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation, 16A Halfway Tree Road, Kingston 5, no later than July 30. Thank you so much. My name is Debbie Bisoun. Thank you for joining us.